I'd like to call the Shelby Township Planning Commission meeting for March 23 to order. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Dallo?
Here.
Ms. DeSico?
Here.
Ms. Cassali?
Here.
Mr. Bernardi?
Here.
Mr. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Appone?
Here.
Mr. Vire?
Here.
Chairman Moffett, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you. First is approval of the agenda, if there are no corrections or additions.
So moved.
Moved by DeSico, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the March 9 meeting. If there are no corrections?
So moved.
Support by Dallo, support by Appone. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the first item for consideration is an item of correspondence received from David Borsma, Spicer Group. Mr. Nguyen, why don't you tee it off and then all with the agenda that's here?
We've, the building department, our department, have been working with the Packard Foundation, their architect, to prepare, kind of review a reuse plan for the Packard site. I guess it's really more, tonight's more of an informal opportunity to let them present what they, what they have in mind, kind of a soft launch of their proposal, and then at some point, after Mr. Borsma's done with the presentation, I'll talk a little bit about procedures.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dave Borsma, Spicer Group. I'm here representing Packard Motor Car Foundation, Packard Proving Grounds. And I'm not sure if you've got full-size copies?
Yes, we enlarged them, yes.
Okay.
You can leave it there.
You should just leave it right where it's at.
Yeah.
Okay. Basically, we're here to share with you the grand scheme of things and the plans of what the foundation would like ultimately those, the Packard Proving Grounds to become. It is the only, I believe the only nationally-registered historic site in the township, and the foundation acquired it from Ford Motor Company. And it's done repairs, basically, over the past few years and used it for car shows and small events. And they wish to see it be more than that. In a letter I briefed out to Mr. Nguyen, we broke it down into basically four phases. And Phase 1 would be the garage building, which is the brighter orange.
If you want to go walk and talk, I need you to use this microphone.
Good.
Okay.
Anyway, that is, that would be the first phase. It's a little over 8,000 square feet. And a couple of years ago, we started working on the building by restoring restrooms in the building, so that when they did have automobile events, they wouldn't have to...
Laser right there.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. So the restrooms, to create some historically appropriate restrooms, all these, these first two buildings are Albert Kahn buildings. And the restrooms helped them not have to bring porta-johns onto the site every time they had a car show or something like that.
So by historically appropriate, you don't mean outhouses, right?
No, I mean, I mean, using...
I could know myself.
Using historic colors and patterns of tile, lighting, you know, things that are more appropriate for that style of building. One of my, one of my qualifications is I'm a historic architect, so, very sensitive to this property. There are many rules that govern what you can do to this property. Because it's on the national registry, Secretary of Interior does not like you changing anything of the original buildings. So the exterior appearance has to stay as it originally was, and the interior can have very minor modifications. So, this, that building right there is what we're trying to do right now. Eventually, we are going to try to seek special land use permit for this site, for that building to be used as an event center.
Mr. Chairman, could I, are you identifying the building that we see from Van Dyke?
No.
It's the one behind it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's a brief layout of a possible table layout for the, for the interior. And we're looking at 276, seating for 276 and 20 staff, bringing it to 296 occupants when used for an event. And these events could be anything from a foundation meeting, it could be a wedding. There are, because of the car culture of the Detroit metro area, it is a desirable area for several people to have a wedding, and, you know, a theme wedding based on automobiles and car culture. So, this is the area that was renovated two years ago, with the understanding that we would eventually be getting to this. And the, the Motor Car Foundation is a nonprofit, so it takes time to see these improvements done, they have to raise money. And a big reason for having this done is it'll be an income flow for the foundation. They'll be able to rent out that space for, for special events. The building that you spoke of, that you see from Van Dyke, the lodge building, that, the foundation's working with Mr. Wood on bringing that building up to code, so they can do guided tours through that building. That building will not be occupied, it's going to be preserved as a, as a museum space eventually. But they've already put fire suppression in there, they've restored heat in that building. And there are several, there's a fairly lengthy list that, that Mr. Wood is working with the foundation on that. I'm not involved with that portion, but I do have fairly good knowledge about that. So that, that would be the first phase. Phase 2... Phase 2 is this, the, the third building, the larger building that's on the site. Plans for that space will be to turn it into a museum space, display space, and they're going to call it the Arsenal Democracy. It'll be used to display wartime efforts done by the Packard, Packard Company, producing tanks, PT boat engines, you know, things like that, as they can get display pieces in there. But that's the idea behind that. And then Phase 3 would be a parking area, to improve the parking on the space, so they can actually have museum hours. And then eventually, the last piece is a connector building between those two buildings. And you can see some, some renderings at the bottom of that sheet that you have in front of you, of what that possibly could look like. Not going to match the building, Secretary of Interior, it's very strict that any new construction cannot match, or try to duplicate, or imitate the historic structures. So it would be borrowing elements of that building, but not duplicating anything of that nature. And in the letter that I drafted to Mr. Nguyen, you can see a preliminary timeline. It is a very ambitious timeline. And all of these items past Phase 1 are very, very preliminary dates. It's highly dependent on how much, how much the foundation can raise to do these improvements. And I, I guess that's, that's about it. Had several meetings with Mr. Wood and Mr. Nguyen to go over the site and some of the issues that were, that were brought up, is parking. And immediate parking, there are, let's see, there's about, I think, 56, I can't read my own writing here. There's about 56 spaces existing on existing pavement, and during events that would have more, more need than 56 vehicles, if any of you have been to the site, you'll, you know that there's a boulevard that goes through the site. And the plan would be to have valet parking to handle anything over 50 cars. And with the existing paving and the boulevard, it has adequate park, parking to meet your ordinance. So, I think that's about the only outstanding issue. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, or any input or thoughts that we can take with us as we move forward. Is there intention to, like I said before, to go through, apply for special land use and then also, at the same time, start permit review with Mr. Wood? Because they'd like to get these improvements done during the summer months, and have heat in the building by the end of the year. That is if special land use is granted.
Okay, to the board, any questions?
Chairman, are we dealing with all of the phases today, or just Phase 1?
Oh, no, this is, we're not dealing with anything other than, he just introduced it.
I understand that, but are we going to deal with only Phase 1? Because there's a big gap between the phases that we have in here.
Again, we're, we're not, we're not acting today. Today, we're just kind of receiving these comments. Mr. Nguyen's gonna, who's gonna discuss what the timeframe is, and then, because there will be opportunity for us to offer input. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Turner?
Mr. Borsma, this is a very ambitious, I think, very good project for this historic part of the township. You mentioned the importance of fundraising. Do you have an estimate of how much it will take to enhance and improve this property to do what you want to do?
Not for all the phases, because they're so preliminary in nature, it's, it's, it's not something you can put a number to yet. I think a year from now, their thoughts for what will go into the building are going to change from what the, what the thoughts are today. The use, no, but what the building, the interiors will be, yes. This Phase 1, we're still working on, on design development, and trying to figure out exactly what kind of systems would be appropriate to put in the building, such as heating, lighting, interior finishes. If I had to put a number on Phase 1, I would say it was in the $100,000 to $150,000 range.
I was just curious, because I think it'd be great for the residents to know what kind of an effort that your organization is going through to come up with this plan, and the amount of money that you're willing to invest to bring this historic piece of property up to something that can be used, that's why I was just wondering.
It's going to be substantial, that's why it's being broken down into phases, so that... This Phase 1 is a big part of gaining the funds to do the rest of the project eventually. The fees from allowing people to have events here goes a long way with building up those funds. There are other avenues as well, there's private donors, there's historic grants, and, you know, we're, we're trying to seek out every one of those to make this happen.
Well, I commend your group for doing what you're doing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Right.
I too think that the Packard Motor Car Foundation should be commended for the efforts they're putting into this site. I know it'll be, if it's completed, will be quite an asset to the community, and I would recommend that anyone, recommend to the Board of Trustees, that anything that the community or the local government could do to assist you, I would certainly recommend that in every way that I could. And I thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you. So far, the township's been very helpful.
Chairman?
Just a couple of thoughts. Tim Wood had suggested we, you know, we have this broader meeting with the architect and their representatives, because there was work being done towards the building, we wanted to make sure that the work wasn't being done, that we, you know, that some specific technical issues didn't get in the way in the bigger picture, so we thought we really wanted to see the big picture. And I'm, this is what we've really been looking for, it's a really nicely done presentation. The site is zoned heavy manufacturing, that's kind of a leftover from the original HM zoning that was part of the overall Packard site, but interestingly enough, that zoning could accommodate a banquet hall as a special land use. So that's not hard to do, and I think this is a, that's a reasonable reuse of the site. And I think we can accommodate the parking and the other ways that we can do this. It's going to be a little different, and we don't want to see the site all paved over, obviously. In terms of trying to work through that process, we have approved temporary use permits for activities, other car shows and other activities, and if there is a need to continue that in the interim basis until they make the final application, you know, we're prepared to do that, with proper review by police and fire and building to make sure the building's safe for inhabitants. And we've talked, I was talking to one of the Packard Foundation members this evening, we've had this conversation before, that we would issue, could issue one permit, let it go for the entire year, and as they come in with different events, we could just modify that permit, so they're not constantly coming in and making application every time they want to have an event. That is until we get the permanent special land use in place. That's a real benefit to them, it's a benefit to us, too. So we're prepared to do whatever we can do to help facilitate this as well. And again, I want to congratulate them on a really nicely done presentation.
Okay. As we're looking to, at our master plan, is it, I mean, is there, is there a more appropriate zoning for this site now, that it's, I mean, does the township want to engage in, I mean, given its, its new designation?
That's a real good thought. And maybe call it out in the master plan as a special area, and then create a zoning district to accommodate it. That's a great thought.
Can define exactly what, what the township and the foundation wish to use the site for. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is a rezoning petition number 02-15 Joseph Icapelli, 50623 mound. This is a public hearing, so allow me to ask the secretary to read the notice that's published.
Charter Township of Shelby, Notice of Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Planning Commission for the Charter Township of Shelby, Macomb County, Michigan, has received a request for approval of the following amendment to the zoning map. Applicant: Joseph Icapelli, Country Club of Clinton Township LLC, 35142 Kensington, Sterling Heights, Michigan, 48312. Rezoning request: C2 linear retail business to R2 two-family residential. Location: West of mound, south of 23 Mile Road, 50623 mound. Sidwell number 23-07-20-231-006. Legal description is as follows. The Planning Commission will meet on Monday, March 23, 2015, at 7:00 PM, in the Shelby Municipal Building, 52700 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan, 5867267243, for the purpose of holding a public hearing on the rezoning application. The application for rezoning, zoning ordinance text and zoning map may be examined at the Planning and Zoning Department in the municipal building, Monday through Friday, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM. Written comments may be submitted to the Planning Commission at the above address prior to the hearing. Oral comments will be heard during the public hearing. This notice is provided pursuant to the requirements of Michigan Public Act 110 of 2006 as amended. Shelby Township Planning Commission, Jerome Moffett Chair, Raquel Moore Secretary. This was published in the Shelby Utica News on March 4, 2015. There were 64 property owners, nine utilities, and two applicants were notified on March 6, 2015.
Thank you. Mr. Kirk, did the publication meet all legal requirements?
Yes, it did.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Moore, did we receive any correspondence on this?
Yes, we did. In fact, we did receive something from Salvatore Militello. He owns the property Lakota Hills Apartments on 50605 Mound Road. He purchased it September 2001, he's maintained the road driveway ever since. He had the sewers installed. His big thing is that he was not aware that there was an ingress egress easement as far as the driveway. And then this other letter that was in, do you want me to address this, from Mr. Icapelli that we had that was older?
I don't, I don't.
No? Okay, all right. That's it. Okay.
Mr. Nguyen, did you have an opportunity to look into it? Because that, I don't know that that necessarily impacts the request this evening, but...
No, it doesn't, it doesn't impact the request, and I would point out that it would, it would impact if this was before the Board of Appeals and we're creating a parcel that doesn't have public access, but if you look on the sheet that was prepared by the engineer, there's a 30-foot ingress egress easement that's recorded at the county that shows that that parcel has access.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's relevant, and it wouldn't be relevant to a rezoning, anyway.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the format for the public hearing will be as follows. The petitioner, representative will give a presentation stating the reasons for the rezoning. Commissioners may then ask questions of the petitioner. The floor will be open to the public, and then the petitioner will be allowed to make concluding remarks at this time. Ask the petitioner or representative to... You break the easel, you bought it. Hey, at least the guys in the cage thought that was funny.
Good evening. Mitchell Clannert with Chipwak Consulting, representing the owner. It's a fairly straightforward request. I'm just available to answer any questions, I guess.
Okay, do you want to at least state what the request is?
Oh, yes. The request is to rezone it from C2 to R2.
Okay, all right. Mr. Nguyen, do you want to give your thoughts before?
This is an odd parcel, inasmuch as it doesn't have frontage on a public road. It's in back of another parcel, it's a little heavily wooded parcel, but it doesn't have access, and that seems to be the unique characteristic of it. And it would suggest, I mean, you have commercial property, you want exposure to highly traveled roads. I can't imagine an office or a retail use thriving here. It's one of those leftover uses, it has, it has adjacent, the adjacent parcels to the west and to the north are zoned and developed for multiple, so this seems like a, I would almost call it a housekeeping type of an amendment. It's a map correction more than anything than it would be a substantive rezoning application.
Okay.
So I'm strong, I feel it's consistent with the master plan, no impact on the neighbors. I would recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners for the petitioner? Okay, thank you. This is the only public hearing the Planning Commission will hold on this rezoning request. Your remarks will be entered into the record for Township Board evaluation. The Town, the Planning Commission is a recommending body, the Township Board will take into consideration these comments when making the final decision on the rezoning. At this time, anyone from the audience is welcome to come up and offer any comments or ask any questions. Go on once, go on twice, three times. Back to the board, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support by Moore, support by Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Our decision, our recommendation this evening must be based on the, on the following, the practicality of this rezoning request, and the effect on the surrounding area, the owner's right to use his land, do current growth and development patterns warrant this rezoning, and is the proposed rezoning in accordance with the master plan? At this time, we can recommend approval, disapprove, or table to evaluate it further.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Cassali.
I move to recommend approval to the Township Board of rezoning petition number 02-15, proposing the rezoning of parcel number 23-07-27-231-006, to be rezoned from C2 linear to R2 two-family residential for the following reasons. Number 1, the proposed change in zoning is consistent with the recommendations contained in the township's adopted master plan and surrounding development patterns. Number 2, the lack of mound road frontage and exposure limits the viability for this site for a retail use. And number 3, the proposed zoning change would not adversely impact any abutting development.
Support.
Okay, moved by Cassali, support by DeSico. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vire?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck. Okay, next item is site plan number 06-23, Oral Investments LLC, 51189 Oral Drive. Is the petitioner here, a representative?
I am Frank Salamoni, I'm the architect for the project. And basically, we submitted plans...
Could I get an address, please?
Oh, 48701 Hayes Road, Shelby Township. Back in, I want to say '06, mid-'06, somewhere in there, we had submitted for site plan approval, we had received site plan approval, we had then even submitted for billing permits. I want to say we were even, we even got a billing permit, if I'm not mistaken. And, of course, times got bad, and we held off, and the owner now is back in front of you, asking for approval again. So basically, we're here to answer whatever questions you may have.
Any, any changes from what was submitted?
None at all.
Eight and a half years ago, Mr. Nguyen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I pulled out the old site plan and gave you a copy, and, you know, the two choices we had was just to re-approve it, or to start the whole process over again. And we didn't see there was any value in doing that. If we could have made this process a little simpler, that's what we felt, so I, you know, worked with Mr. Salamoni for years, and it was a good plan to begin with, it's still a good plan, and really, the ordinance, the ordinance hasn't changed in terms of industrial, except it, it was more liberal for the parking calculation. So we wouldn't have required more parking, now it would probably have been less parking. So for those reasons, I thought it would just be simple, just to get a recommendation, just to, just on re-approval and move on.
Okay. Any, any questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman?
Mr. Vire?
I move to approve the recently submitted site plan for a proposed industrial building on lots 15 and 16 in the Oral Industrial Subdivision, number 06-23, as submitted.
Support.
Okay, moved by Vire, support by Moore. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Vire?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Appone?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Dallo?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassali?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, if, if everybody could leave their copies of the plans, I will stamp and sign them tomorrow, that way we're not getting any more copies, so we can just, just leave them on top, if you could.
Okay, next item, site plan number 15-13, Greg Icapelli, Chesterfield 5 LLC. You can double my old...
Yes.
For the record, if I get your name and address again.
Name and address again? All right. Frank Salamoni, I'm the architect for the project, 48701 Hayes Road, Shelby Township. Basically, we're here in front of you today, we submitted a site plan for a new industrial building on lot 10 in Wing Industrial Drive, and basically here to answer whatever questions you have.
Nguyen?
There, there aren't many comments of substance with this. The only comment I had was, is put a standard note on there that if there's any roof-mounted equipment that we're going to, it's visible from the road, that it'll be screened. The comment about roof drainage, that would really probably be handled at final review at engineer, building and engineering. The engineer's comments are pretty, pretty standard, in terms of just minor technicalities. There's really, again, nothing here that would, I think, create any design issues. Couple minor corrections, and we're ready to go.
I have the screening on the elevations.
Okay, then, then we're really close. So I, again, I'd recommend approval of this, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, to the board, any questions for the petitioners, representative?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Turner?
Salamoni, are you going to be having any outside storage at all?
No.
Because I noted, Mr. Nguyen, there is a note on the plan that they will not have outside storage without Planning Commission approval.
Right.
Is that, it should be the Township approval, right, or is it just Planning Commission?
Planning Commission, yes.
Okay, all right.
What we typically do, if there's minor outdoor storage, you know, bins or some equipment, we're usually, as long as it's not getting in the way, and does not visibly, you know, that it doesn't look bad, you know, we don't want to micromanage these sites and, you know, drive by them all the time, so keep that note on there just as a safeguard in case they get, some sites sometimes accumulate, and pretty soon you have to kind of go back and get them cleaned up, so, it's a good note to have on there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is somebody over here? Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
I move to approve the site plan for Greg Icapelli, site plan 15-13...
I move to approve the site plan for Greg Icapelli, Site Plan 15-13, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all department comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Moore, support by Turner. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Moore.
Yes.
Commissioner Turner.
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Repone?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Let's recycle these. I can use some of these plans as well.
Okay, next item is site plan number 15-04, John Graham. Before we get started, I'm going to recognize Commissioner DeSico.
Thank you. I'd just like to advise the commission that I have represented the petitioner on unrelated matters in the past.
Okay, do you believe a conflict would exist?
No, I do not.
That's good, that's fine by me. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Tony with CMA Design Services, A183 Roadie. I represent John Graham, really. The proposed building is an 11,500-square-foot light industrial building with a 4,000-square-foot mezzanine for future expansion. There's a 5,000-square-foot office area, 6,500 square feet of shop area. The building is basically, again, a light storage maintenance building. It's going to be located on Hayes Road. It'll be on the west side of Hayes, just north of 22, just south of the CAS collision. The site's about an acre and a half, and we're proposing about 58 parking spots, and there's 42 that's required.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wind?
Again, Mr. Chairman, there are very few comments on this one. My, all of my comments have been addressed. The building department indicates a demolition permit's required, and the recessed ramp configuration on the, front of the building will have to be modified to meet ADA requirements. That's not really a site plan issue. The engineer had a few minor comments as well, but again, there's really nothing in here that would change their design.
Okay, thank you. To the board, any questions for the petitioner?
Just want to confirm the total square footage in the building.
Do you want to restate that?
The total building, the footprint's 11,500, but there is a 4,000 square-foot mezzanine that's proposed for future usage for office.
Okay, just because it says total building is 9,900, so just wanted to confirm that.
There was some, there was some modifications, I think, when we first started.
Okay, that's fine. It could have been, it could have been just a discrepancy, but I would take his current estimate number.
Okay, so the 9,000 plus is just a wrong number. The plans that you submitted is...
Possibly, yes. It's in the plan, so, it's wrong.
All right, thanks.
Okay, sorry.
All right. Chairman, Mr. Turner.
I have a question about the material making up the outside of the building. It's a nice-looking building, but you have, it's 11,500 square feet, and a lot of it is concrete masonry. Is that going to be split-faced block? Actually, if you could... I'm sorry.
Actually, the building is a pre-engineered system with a, with a masonry facade. The upper portion is metal, and then there's some, the entryways are done with, with that, I don't want to call it fake stone, but...
Right.
Cultured stone.
Mm-hmm.
But truly, the structure, it's on its own.
I thought I saw a part about, it was concrete masonry. It's not concrete masonry?
Yeah, I think it's, it's more of a block material than it is a brick material.
More of a veneer.
Okay. So it doesn't look like a, a wall of block building there on Hayes Road.
Absolutely not. As you can tell even from the elevations, all this is, this will be Ephesus above here, this is all metal siding, and then there'll be masonry veneer on, all throughout the building.
Great, thank you.
Kind of interesting mix of materials. Attractive, I think it's an attractive-looking building for that location, too.
Yeah, thank you.
And the site plan was really well done. This is like three in a row we've had.
Your timing is good, too, because by the time you're, you're getting ready to build, that road should be done.
Brian has basically run out of room. He's currently on Van Dyke now, and this will be a good expansion for him.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. Chairman? Sure.
I move to approve site plan for John Graham, Site Plan number 15-04, subject to the submission of a revised plan addressing all departmental comments.
Support.
Okay, moved by Turner, support by Repone. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the roll. Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Commissioner Repone?
Yes.
Commissioner Vier?
Yes.
Commissioner Dalu?
Yes.
Commissioner DeSico?
Yes.
Commissioner Cassaly?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernardi?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
And Chair votes yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, next is Planning Director's Report.
A couple items, Mr. Chairman. Let me start with the, I guess, the last one first, which is the, the master plan update. You recall, we did a request for qualifications from consultants to update our plan, and I think we got six applications, or six responses. We interviewed four of the firms a couple of weeks, and then we narrowed it down to, we did some rankings. We all met after, a week afterwards, and we kind of unanimously agreed that LSL Planning and their team was the, was the preferred team. I guess before I offer any more, if anybody else, I mean, you were on there, Mrs. Cassaly, Mr. Turner, Mr. Repone, so, you know, if anyone offered some of the reasons, we felt really strongly and unanimously that this was the right firm.
You know, I could, I'll start off, I, you know, I appreciated the process that, that we went through, and had some excellent, excellent responses. I think it's, it's a testament somewhat to the community that so many of these firms want to do business here and want to be a part of what the town, you know, how the township conducts itself. But clearly, I think, one, the firm that, that we're going to recommend, you know, stood out in large part, the, the staff that they committed to this whole process in a number of areas was far superior, where they had expertise, they lent it, and then where they could find, you know, stronger support other places, they went out and got some other consultants, so I think it's exciting. And the fact that they're also the first group that's, that's working with the DDA on developing their plan, that there'll be one cohesive plan for the entire township, I think is, and I think they've, we're also going to get benefit from the work that they've been done for the last six months on that plan as well.
Commissioner Cassaly, anything to add, or Mr. Turner?
Well, I just want, yeah, I'll just, I think that, that the process was very, very good from my perspective. I never, I've never dealt with any of these consultants before, and meeting them and seeing their presentation and talking to them and seeing how they would approach the plan and how, well, it came down to me for three, three different things. The, their perspective on the plan and what they want to do with it. The, the presentation that they made to the, you know, to, to our committee and how they would fulfill the plan, and then, of course, the last one was the preparation for the interview, and there were different levels of preparation that we got to see during our committee meeting. The, the four were boiled down to two, which in my mind, there were two very qualified, and it really wasn't about who was best qualified, like Mr. Wind said, who was best suited based on what we wanted, because all of the consultants were very qualified in their own way. But LSL, it was between LSL and another one, and I went back and forth for at least a couple of weeks after we initially, or maybe a week after we had our first meeting, and I would agree, LSL would be a, a good choice because of the master plan that they're working on, making that mesh in with the, I mean, the downtown development plan meshing with the master plan. And then, like you said, Mr. Chairman, the good mix of their in-house experts and their external experts coming together to help us out. We're looking for something new and different, and I think they will offer us something new and different.
Thank you. What I liked, one of the, because I liked, too, was, and I think you said this before, Mr. Chairman, every five years, we do this. Sometimes it's good to get fresh eyes on it. You know, you, you get a different perspective, and their, their emphasis was on implementation. Sometimes plans are front-loaded with a lot of gee-whiz information, and the back part of the plan where we implemented is kind of left, is not emphasized, and they want to flip the whole process. So I think that was something that attracted me. You know, we want to have a, a plan that people use and recognize, and, and not something that's terribly long. You know, they would maybe make it 30 pages, and they'd have an addendum with some other technical information, but that's going to be an appendix, not the overall plan. So to follow up, we're not asking for any decisions tonight because you haven't met them, and they still have to give us cost estimate. I met with them last Monday. We started talking about scope, more detailed scope and cost, and we will, should have that probably, hopefully, maybe by the next meeting, because obviously, you, we want you to make a recommendation, we'd like them to make a presentation to this group, and then obviously has to go to the Township Board for full approval. But I think the, what impressed all of us is what I think impressed the DDA, was that emphasis on implementation and their team. You know, they had two people that had economic backgrounds, and then the three people that were the planners, so I think, again, a good mixture, and you have the principles of their firm. You know, the people we interviewed are the people who are going to be working on the plan, not somebody else, which I, I like. And just related to what some of the work they're doing to the DDA, and this would have to, again, come as part of their formal proposal, but we've asked them to revisit the C6 zoning standards, because we put those in place about 12 years ago, and if they're going to update the plan for the DDA, we should probably look at some of the zoning standards, because they could probably benefit from some changes. So they would be the ones that would be doing that, and if any new site plans come in into